I will officially call this special meeting of the probation oversight commission to order at 12:02 on Monday, March 14th, 2022. Wendy, can you please get it started?
Yes, I'm happy to. Thank you Chair Carrillo. And I am just looking at the attendees list of our panelists as we wait for quorum, but we can begin the meeting and we will hopefully have quorum in a moment. So today's meeting, as Chair Carrillo said, is a special public meeting of the probation oversight commission with only one item on the agenda, which is the discussion of the probation oversight commission's long awaited education report. Our meeting is being broadcast live today to our Facebook page. You can watch on Facebook page, but there's no on Facebook Live, but there's no engagement with users on Facebook. And the recording will also be available there and on our website later. You can follow us on our social media accounts to make sure you know when we're having meetings, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, at LA County POC for more information about our meetings. Today's meeting has four main sections. The members of our programs and services ad hoc committee will be summarizing the contents of the drafted education report. They will explain the methods followed by findings and observations, discuss the probation oversight commission's recommendations, and then we'll conclude by hearing comments from the public. We welcome your participation and I'll explain how that will work after we finish the presentations. For those of you who are already accustomed to our process, we're going to use the raise your hand feature, but it is currently disabled. We'll open up that feature when we're ready to take public comment. We have many questions that were submitted in advance. We've answered many of those in the report and we'll be happy to answer those in our conversation. I'm going to start by taking role of the commissioners. Commissioners, please unmute yourselves and let us know you're here. Commissioner Dolores Canales?
Present. Thank you.
Commissioner Danielle Dupuis?
Present.
Commissioner Garcia Lays?
Present.
Commissioner Sam Lewis?
Present.
Oh, great. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Ishay Jackson? Commissioner Don Meredith? Commissioner Dominique Nong is not attending today. Neither is Commissioner Yamashiro. We may have Commissioners Jackson or Meredith join us shortly. Chair Frankie Carrillo?
I'm here.
Great. And with that, we do have a quorum established and I'll turn it over to you Chair Carrillo.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, since the launch of the POC, education advocates from around the county, young adults who were incarcerated as teens in LA County probation halls and camps, and Supervisor Hilda Solis have asked the POC to examine and report on the state of education in the juvenile hall and juvenile camp schools. Since advocates are unable to observe the schools, probation oversight commissioners offered to be the eyes and ears of the public on this issue. The POC offered to conduct a series of observations in classrooms and present those observations in the form of this report. In keeping with the POC's role as civilian oversight, this report does not reflect a technical or scientific evaluation of education in LA's juvenile court schools. Others are already engaged in that work. LACO conducts periodic rigorous self-evaluation of schools as part of California's school accreditation process. These self-evaluations are reviewed by the Western Associated Schools and Colleges. A team from UCLA is currently reviewing the Road to Success Academy curriculum used in LA juvenile hall court schools. An independent monitor is overseeing review process of the schools as part of a settlement agreement with the California Department of Justice. The POC will do what it can to make these reports public. Instead, what this report offers are the considered observations of laypeople. Nonetheless, we have endured to be objective and fair, and we hope that this report will be helpful, be a helpful tool to those working to support the educational accomplishments of LA incarcerated youth. Before we get into the meat of the report, we want to thank the commissioners who conducted these observations for their time. In particular, I would like to thank Commissioners Sean Garcia Lays, who spearheaded this effort and was instrumental in getting us to where we are today. As an educator, a former teacher himself, his guidance and work are appreciated. Sean, please proceed by describing the methods and anything you have left with respects to introducing this report.
Sure. Thank you Chair. So, well, we're going to walk through the report here for maybe 20 or 30 minutes before we get into the conversation. I know a great many people who are joining this meeting will have looked at it, but not read it through carefully, although I also heard from several of you that did. So let me just start by explaining the methods. Like Chair Carrillo just said, this wasn't the kind of assessment where we come in with an assessment tool and we do the same evaluation of every classroom. Really, what this was about was observations, interviews that were done in a systematic way, but we're really about capturing what our subjective impressions were. So to make sure we were systematic, we make sure we went to every one of the juvenile court schools. I think we went to all of them more than once, several of them several times. We did things like when I would do my visits, I would go through the incident reports. When you first go into one of the halls or camps, you know, there's a clipboard where they keep a lot of incident reports. And I would look for which groups of young people were having the most challenges with teachers and the authorities. And I would make sure to visit the ones that had challenges, but also visit ones where there were a few incident reports. So I could get a sense of where things were going good, as well as where there were a lot of challenges. So we visited the special day classes. We made an effort to really make sure that we weren't missing anything. But then, once we were there, we would call up chairs, sit, take notes for maybe an hour, sometimes it's been each two hours in a single classroom. We would go and interview young people. I interviewed several principals for hours, spent, you know, an hour or two with several different teachers, either on their lunch breaks or towards the end of the school day. And out of these observations, conversations, you know, looking over kids at their work, talking to them during lunch, I think we got a pretty good sense of what's going on. And so, like I said, there's subjective impressions, but we did have a fairly rigorous methodology. So that takes us to our findings. So the first finding was regarding the culture of learning. And Sam, would you please talk to Commissioner Lewis, talk to us about that finding?
Absolutely. Thank you Commissioner. So, most classrooms within the juvenile carceral system lacks the culture of learning. This is one of the findings, and specifically in juvenile court schools, that the car just being in jail or the carceral setting is always present. While there are significant differences between the environment of facilities between Captain Kilpatrick, Berry J. Nighthoff Juvenile Hall and Central Juvenile Hall, for example, there's never any forgetting that those are locked facilities. While it is not within the ability of the lay observer to describe the effect of this psychology of students, it seems obvious to commissioners that the stress of setting impacts, of this setting impacts students' ability to learn. Just talking with some of the youth that, I actually was in a juvenile hall this weekend and was talking to some youth about what excites them about learning and even some of the youth that have come home. And those that have been able to really transcend the carceral setting, find it, there has to be a culture or an excitement of going to school, something to look forward to. And that has to be created, regardless of the setting, it has to be created by those that lead the classroom, which are teachers. And sometimes classrooms are often like just another facility or another cell or brick building, and that's not something that excites you. And so creating that culture that excites students to want to learn, to look forward to the very next day at school, to kind of look at a Friday, kind of like, I can't wait till Monday comes so I can go to school. Like that has to be created in the environment in order for children, young people that are incarcerated, to really, really thrive in these environments. The attitude of most of the students that were interviewed during this time was at best apathetic or like, it just wasn't interest. That has to be created by our teachers that are in the classrooms. Both from personal experience in the carceral setting and from talking to many youngsters that are incarcerated, that excitement comes from our teachers. And we have to figure out a way to actually do that, create that in these classrooms, in these carceral settings. Thank you.
Moving on to another part of the findings, it's entitled "The quality of instruction is generally far below expectation." Instructions at most classes involve either watching a video or reading a nonfiction essay and then answering short questions. Sometimes this was done as a whole class assignment, sometimes by students working independently on laptops. Often, the class was divided into two or three small groups with a teacher orally, while others were, two or three students work independently. Questions nearly always involve simple recalls and did not require a grade level assessments or application of what they were watching or reading. There was some situations where, for those students who were engaged, you know, what we got back from them was that, you know, they knew that their educational, how they were doing in class reflected on them getting what they needed for credits and so on to come home, to get out. And so there was some, there was some motivation there. I think, I think under the guise of the quality of instruction, from my personal observation, there was, there was a lot of, sadly, a lot of socializing in these classrooms. There should have been more education. I know that the one, a few classrooms that I walked into, there was obviously, the ratio was very high. There was a teacher, maybe a couple of different aides, some staff members were there. And even with that being the case, you know, there was a lot of graffiti writing. I felt like the instructional level was, I'm giving you an assignment, you know, there might have been a block of time where that was supposed to be done. If you do it, you do it. If you don't, you don't. And I thought that was very, very troubling. So the quality of instruction was obviously a concern to me, which was why I made it onto this report, along with everybody else, obviously. Moving on, other sections of this report. I think that, I think that the computer, you know, makes it a very modern 21st century approach on education, but it also, it also takes away from group activities in the classroom. In some cases, there was, there was reading that went around the class. In some cases, some students didn't want to read, they would pass. But they felt that the quality of instruction at that point should have been more exciting the student to get involved versus just, you know, just say no, I don't want to do it. And, and I think that was, that obviously is one of the reasons why it felt below the standard. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so if you're looking at the slide and helping run go one, two, three, four, five, these things overlap. So we are covering them all, but they do overlap. And I wanted to add something to the connection between the quality of instruction and the engagement. And that is that, you know, as a teacher, it is really, really hard to inspire young people. And I went into this thinking that it is possibly impossible to do in the carceral setting with the stress that the kids are under with, you know, the turnover at juvenile halls. And sometimes people have been there, you know, weeks. But we did see times and teachers that were able to overcome all that. So we know, we know it is possible. The best example I saw was actually an acting class. But if you've ever worked on trying to access court curriculums through different learning modalities, right, what I saw that was, was an English class. This was a class about reading. But the kids thought it was an acting class. And it began with a few warm-up acting exercises. What those did is they got the kids out of the chairs, moving around, interacting with each other, behaving as a team, laughing, enjoying themselves. So this opening activity got everybody feeling like they were part of something and smiling and working together and having fun. Then they moved into reading a play. The play was difficult. It was not, you know, middle school level reading. It was, it was a play where they were having trouble reading some of it. But they were trying. They were up out of their seats. They were walking around reading. The teacher was making them reread things when they mispronounced words, challenged them, you know, through the acting methods. It was about, you know, why are you saying that? So it was really, the comprehension challenges were really high level. And the kids were rising to it. They were explaining why the characters said this, what's going on in their mind, what inferences are being made from the text. It was amazing. So we know that that sort of instruction works because we saw it. But we did not see it often. The vast majority of what we saw was the 21st century version of packet work, right, where instead of getting a packet and being left to do that for an hour, they were given a laptop with reading and then multiple choice questions. So the variety was there. But there was, there was too much of the rote work. Our fourth finding, though, was in some way surprising in that there was often too many staff. You know, we want a high teacher to student ratio. That's something that education advocates always push for. But we saw places where there were three or, I mean, classes are often three, four, five young people in the room. I saw one class where there were six young people, but I think it was nine adults. There would be a teacher. There would maybe be some paraeducators for special needs kids. There would be a probation officer, sometimes two, whose duties were safety. There would be some teachers assistants. And what would happen was you would have so many adults in the room that the students weren't the focus anymore. And these adults either had unclear responsibilities or overlapping responsibilities, or in the case of safety, ideally, they actually had no responsibility. They were just there in case. And so you had just a lot of people sitting around doing nothing. And like physically, they were all mixed up with the students and these adults just sitting there, all mixed together. And the result was you didn't have a learning environment. It wasn't even clear when you walked into the room that it was a classroom. And so the staffing turned out in some ways, what we thought would be a bonus was, was in many ways a barrier to learning. In no cases did we ever see too few staff. That was never a problem. It was always so many adults that nobody was clear what their roles were. The fifth finding is the ability and intent to improve instruction was exhibited by a few. In other words, we saw some reformers within the system. And we saw some passionate teachers. And you'll see in the recommendations, we really found that to be the best hope for improving the quality of schools. So when we saw groups of teachers, you know, really working together to come up with ways to address the lack of a culture of learning or the lack of engagement, that seemed to have real possibility. And those teachers were also the ones that usually had the most caring classrooms and the students who were responding the best to them and the instruction were most engaged. We've met some administrators. One of the things that sort of happened after we worked out the original findings is there's been a fair amount of movement of administrators around the juvenile court schools. And for the most part, speaking for myself at least, I'm very happy with the people I've seen put in charge in the last year. And I think that they have real potential at improving the schools. So both teachers and site administrators, we were, we were really happy with quite a few of the administrators and unfortunately, not enough of the teachers, but, but they're there and they were there virtually every facility. So yeah, that takes us to recommendations. And the first recommendation, empower effective principals, teachers, and youth to collaborate and lead site-specific improvement efforts. So, you know, this isn't in the findings so clearly, but there is a curriculum for the juvenile court schools, the Road to Success Academy curriculum. And in a lot of ways, it's a really great curriculum. But it is also a top-down approach in the sense that, from what I can tell, it was began at one school, it worked really well there. It was then brought up to the top administration and then everybody else is supposed to get on board with it. And it doesn't have that bottom-up sort of teacher involvement, like students aren't going to feel like they wrote the Road to Success Academy curriculum. They're not going to take any ownership of it. It's just handed to them. And to some degree, teachers also. So what we, we saw that was really effective is when people said, okay, we've got the curriculum that we need it, that is a resource. But the way we are going to make these schools better and our young people's lives better is by listening to them, talking with each other, creating a community, and building an educational program out of that community based on listening. So we saw that happening and we think that that is the best chance for really tangible improvement of the schools. And so our recommend, first and foremost, is more of that. The top-down curriculum is well-written. It's good. But it was already written. We need something that's more bottom-up and involves listening to the community, the learning community. Second recommendation, yeah Frankie, you want to take that one?
Sure. Thank you, Sean. So the second one is academic work. So I'll read part of this here and I'll give you some, some comments. Transformation requires authentic self-reflection and education that empowers youth to understand and transform their place in society. That cannot happen if teachers are afraid to allow students to express their honest feelings and beliefs and critically engage with students' home communities. While the RTSA curriculum adopted by LACO for juvenile court schools clearly intends for students to use school as an opportunity for holistic personal growth, we rarely observe that happening. To us, this was unsurprising. The extraordinary trauma faced by many students raises challenges to this kind of engagement that are far outside teacher's scope of practice. Fortunately, there are DMH employees at every site who are trained in creating safe space where students can be honest. Furthermore, the probation department has recognized the need for credible messengers in the halls and camps who are able to engage with students. You know, I'm going to, I'm going to stop reading there and really focus on, on the fact that something the chair talked about, Sean, you know, he really talked about the fact that, you know, the playing field here can appear to be very one-sided. Teachers show up to work, you know, with the right heart condition, administrators and so on. And sometimes the youth are not carrying that. You know, there's many fingers to point, focus on the students or the staff, the administration and so on. But I think that when we, when, when I think about my experience a few months ago, going into one of the sites, one of the camps, and being an outsider, walking into a space, obviously, we were only there for a few hours, but regardless, the credible messenger part here seems to be a part in the larger pie here that it can be very helpful moving forward. And I know that there's already folks with lived experience to go in there, CBOs and so on. But I think, I think to, to sort of bridge those gaps, maybe use that as an example, is, is, can be, can be a reminder, maybe things that the teacher maybe would not say, but a credible messenger can say, hey, look, look at me and let that be a mirror. You know, I was here X, X, you know, number of years ago and so on. And we find a way to maybe connect those dots, maybe, maybe it can be a lived experience story that can maybe be the thing that bridges it together. That's under the guise of academic work. I have another section I'll be talking about right after that, which is now. And let me go to that, which is, I think, the third section, right, right Chair? Third section?
Yes.
Thank you. The third section is titled "Integrate Arts, Cooperative Learning, Project-Based Learning and Cultural Relevance into Classroom Instruction." And I'll read that section. It's a very short section. The single best, the single best example that we observed of what juvenile court schools could, could look like in the acting class descriptions in the findings, which combined arts, operative learning, and project-based learning, as well as exhibiting cultural relevance. The class began with acting exercises that got youth out of their seats, connecting them with others, making the activities embodied as social experiences and not exclusively intellectual. The teachers established high standards for rigor by giving the students a challenging script with the requirement that they must practice reading it until they could read it fluently, with fluency. Oh my God, look at me. I can't pronounce this word, protacy, and comprehension. Thanks, thanks Sean for laughing at me. As with authentic engagement, the RTSA curriculum clearly anticipates project-based learning through the rarely observed and taking, rarely observed yet taking place. Rather, RTSA activities were mostly projects to be shown during the school with regular exhibitions and scenes, more like extracurricular activities than a primary method for assessing rigorous academics. Teachers should be engaged to look for instructional activities that combine arts comprehensive learning, project-based learning, and culturally relevant instructions as ways to teach core academic content, and not only as extracurriculum activity. One of the things that I, that I, I'm sorry, I saw, I saw this in action when another site visit, when we went into a classroom and there was, they were reading a book, I can't recall the name of the book, but there seemed to be no, no fire in anyone's belly, that, that being that the students, obviously, the teacher, it was just, it's just check this off the list and keep moving. Then we went to a different classroom where there was a CBO there doing exactly what I was talking about, this sort of physical activity, moving around, the scripts were being assigned to everyone. And it seemed to give people an opportunity to break away from the role of being confined and really allow them to exercise pretending to be someone else. And I think that a lot of these CBOs, the one they're reminding people that, you know, we want you to change, if it's change your way of thinking, mature and so on. But I think this one here is obviously one that ties in with everything else perfectly. Thank you Chair.
Can anyone hear? I can't hear.
Sorry, I was on mute. So, planning to take advantage of the low staff to student ratios goes back to what I talked about earlier, which is that there are remarkably low numbers of students in every classroom and potentially even too many adults. Right, that, that's something that we can take advantage of. But what seemed to happen was that there was no planning outside the classroom or even in the classroom that I could see over how all these different adults were going to work together. So, you know, in some cases where there were group activities, we would see the probation officers who were there for safety reasons, join in and get involved. And those were the, some of the best classes we saw. There's a group activity. All the adults were involved. Usually, everybody was smiling, right? That was great. But most of the time, it was somebody sitting either just outside the door or just inside the door. There were a lot of TAs, teachers assistants, paraeducators who were in the classroom who were just sort of waiting for their students to have work to do and then would sit next to them. Unfortunately, what we often saw at that point was kids were trying to resist doing the work. They were looking for distractions. And so the paraeducator or the teacher became somebody to talk to or engage with rather than doing the work. And that, I think, was a result of not having any clear plan for what the student should be doing when, what the paraeducator would do to help, what the end result was going to be. So I think if we were to have more of that sort of planning ahead of time, we could turn the number of adults from what is honestly surprisingly a weakness to an advantage. Next recommendation. Commissioner Lewis, you were going to talk about this one.
Are you sure that this is the third, this is the, the fourth? I think.
Very little out of order.
Okay. Not a problem. So, so, to ensure that the secure track facility affects the best possible education program. We all know now that youth that would previously have been incarcerated, Department of Juvenile Justice will now be kept in Los Angeles facilities. And the county is planning to create a re- And the county is planning to create a repurpose, one or more secure track facilities to house these young people. This means the creation of one or more new juvenile court schools. This is a tremendous opportunity actually, uh, to reimagine what a juvenile court school can be. However, we are concerned with the challenge of, of choosing a facility, the inability of staff, the cap, inability to staff Camp Kilpatrick for the use of temporary, as a temporary facility and de facto use of the compound in Berry J. Nightoff Juvenile Hall, uh, Court School. In the meantime, combine, combine, combine to make the creation, wait a minute. In the meantime, we'll, in the meantime, we will combine to make the creation of a new school impossible, all of these different elements that, that are like just clashing against each other. We fear that county agencies will be unable to effectively plan a new program. I think, and we think probably the most powerful thing we could do is instead of agencies just actively or, or the, the current process that we have, what we should do is actually partner up with agencies and advocates to find the best educational experts to plan a new school or schools that should be considered on how to staff and, and how to staff these new school or schools. Finding innovative ways and we shouldn't just limit ourselves to looking at, say, California or Los Angeles, but we should look nationwide and what are the most innovative ways to increase academic performance and participation within our schools. I think Berry J. is, is an example of what could potentially be. And it's not necessarily Berry J., but the partners there, Mission College and UCLA. These are colleges where young people have been able to graduate with their associate's degrees and this opened up a window in their minds where they see beyond the walls that confine them. But this came from partnering with those universities, those colleges. Now imagine if we could have every university or college that's in the LA area or throughout the state wanting to, wanting to partner within these juvenile facilities, especially in LA, if you think about it, you have UCLA, Mission College, Cal, all of the Cal states, USC. This could be powerful in allowing our youth to be able to actually imagine achieving their master's degree, their PhD, and being able to walk out of a facility ready to change the world to one that, that's better. But the first thing is actually reimagining how this would look and to bring in advocates and, uh, community educators that can see it differently. I think the first steps in, in, in doing this were, were actually being allowed, actually allowing our young people that were in juvenile hall to finish their associate's degrees. But why stop there? So many of these kids that I've talked to that have finished their associate's degrees would love to be able to pursue their bachelor's degree and their master's degree. And so many that have come home are pursuing their bachelor's and master's degrees. So figuring out a way, how do we do that and recreate this process for our kids?
Thanks. So another finding was, trying to look over what we might, oh, okay, this, this is an important one and it's looking at the balance between education and safety, the potential tension there. You know, we've talked about the best example, uh, being these acting classes, it's just, just one example. But that begins with students getting out of their seats, moving around the room. Staff are, are legitimately afraid of kids getting in fights. Now fortunately, if you've worked with kids, you see they telegraph that usually a mile away. You see it coming, you feel it in the room, you see it in their eyes and their body language. But then I will also acknowledge that there are times when students will keep that hidden, right? And will, will, uh, you know, sort of surprise you with, with actually some planning. But that's rare, very rare. What is every minute of every day is classroom and instruction. So I recognize that there's a tension there, uh, but that tension can be managed. And too often what happens is people's fear, uh, regarding safety or whatever the probation department's plan is for, uh, how to, to put these kids together. It takes away from the learning. So a, another example is at Campus Kilpatrick. The youth are put into dorms and they are kept together as a group, you know, all day, every day. Now they're put together in that group for a lot of reasons. Uh, I, I'm pretty sure none of which are, you know, their reading ability or the sorts of things that the school, the teachers would like to see kids grouped by. So what we end up is not ever being able to do at a campus Kilpatrick homogenous grouping based on educational levels. Uh, and there's times for that. So that's another example of how we see a tension between safety and, or even just program, probation's version of programming and the classrooms conflicting. And it seems like safety always wins without any thought. I mean, there has to be an acknowledgement that there is risk, but there also has to be an acknowledgement that sometimes the risk is worth it. And it will pay off in better schools. And we believe in the long run, if you have students who are engaged and think that they're getting something valuable out of school, the classrooms will actually become safer places. So there is a long-term, I think, benefit to allowing some more freedom and, and thinking of those things. Uh, another finding is, or recommendation is, um, last one, make the DJJ settlement public. So this has come up in past meetings in that there is a settlement agreement between the State Department of Justice, the LA County Office of Education and the probation department regarding the juvenile court schools. Uh, there are plans, they are in, in act, there are independent monitors. Right, things are happening. However, none of this is being shared with the public. Frankly, I think an excuse has been given to us, which is that because that this is involving litigation, nobody can comment and they're all confidential documents, but confidentiality can be waived by the parties. So the department of, uh, so if, if Laco and the Department of Justice and probation department agree that we're going to make this public, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna waive confidentiality, it can be done. And I think we have seen a lot of people who are concerned about education in the halls and camps feeling like things aren't being done and are frustrated understandably. When in fact, some of the things that they're calling for, uh, are, are planned and being instituted and well underway, but nobody is, is taking, nobody is sharing, um, these things. Also, the independent monitors are gagged. And I think they should be able to engage in the public and, uh, in a two-way dialogue. And that can't happen until, um, the settlement and the plans and the results and the people involved are, are allowed to talk about it. So that's an easy one that can be done right away. Uh, so those are all the recommendations. I do want to share one last thing. We're a little bit ahead of the time, so, so I'm going to take advantage of that and share that. There's one other anecdote from the findings. Sam, were you saying something? No, there's one other anecdote from the findings that I think really explains where some of the best opportunity for improvement is and where we're falling short and why I think, a, a, and the rest of that committee found that like a laser-like focus on student engagement is what's called for. So that was a class where the students were given not nearly enough work. They wasted time for a half hour, uh, arguing about passwords and this and that. Then one student said, oh, give me the work on paper. He did it in two minutes, uh, right, he had 45 minutes to do this work. So eventually the teacher saw that like, it was time for a change, students were going to start, you know, I tell you how they start telegraphing their moods, right? He could read in the mood that they were frustrated and ready to do something different. So he said, okay, let's put on some videos. And he put on a motivational, there was a graduation speech by Steve Jobs. And this, this didn't happen. They were like, who is this guy? I mean, I know he is, but I don't care who he is, he doesn't speak to me. Some of them listened and before they gave up, some of them just saw him and was like, no, this guy, come on. And one of the young men, uh, young African-American man, um, was, was standing up, he got out of the seat and he, and he just straight out said candidly to the teacher like, I don't want to hear anything more about these white guys who don't know anything about my life, play somebody black. Let's hear what black people have to say. Uh, I, I was totally on his side when he said it. It made sense to me. So the response of the teacher at first was no, Steve Jobs has a lot to say, if you listen to him, if you give him a chance, uh, you'll appreciate what he has to say. Right, like I said, the, the student is now out of the seat, he's sort of talking bluntly with the teacher and, and the teacher was like, no, stick with the plan. So he paused while this was going on, pressed play again. Goes on for like 30 seconds, the young man stood up, sits back down, crosses his arms, is like visibly upset. Nobody is really paying any attention to the video, but the teacher, you know, is going to stick to his plan. So the video plays for another 30 seconds or so and the, the one kid who's like crossing his arms like gets up again. He's like, you're not hearing me, like, we don't want to hear this, why are you wasting our time? And at this point, the teacher is like, okay, now the kid, you know, he, he sees this coming, right? If he does not do something different, it's entirely likely that this kid is going to escalate. So it's like, okay, what do you want? It's like, I want to hear black people. He says, okay. So he gets onto YouTube and he brings up a Donahue episode from the eighties with Nelson Mandela. So, uh, you know, Nelson, Nelson Mandela was a big influence on me. I actually even spent some time learning Zulu in college because I was so inspired by the South African anti-apartheid movement. Nelson Mandela was not what this kid was asking for. So the kid, so, so Mandela is speaking in his very soft-spoken voice and kids not having it. So he's, he gets up, he's like, no, I said somebody black, um, meaning, you know, African-American. And you know, this, the, the teacher is like, oh no, actually at this point the kid was like, play some Malcolm X. He's like, he's giving very direct instructions, play some Malcolm X, I know Malcolm X is on YouTube, let's hear what he has to say. Teacher says, no, 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 we're going to go back to Nelson Mandela. And then realizes that that's a bad idea. I, I can't remember if he played another minute or two. Uh, and that point is like, you know what? Let's pause the video. And he hands everybody some candy. It was about five minutes of class left, two minutes of class left. Which was actually the most brilliant thing he did. Everybody got the candy, relaxed, the TV went off, it was all fine. I'm just like, I think that was going to happen next and enjoying their, their candy. I think there's one other piece, actually no, I don't want to confuse stories. Anyways, so this is, um, you know, a, a classic example of a missed opportunity. So afterwards, I asked the teacher during lunch, I was like, so, you know, I think at the end there you did a good job reading the room, uh, I know how difficult this is, I was a teacher myself, like, you know, I, I saw how, how hard and I don't know how much better I could have done for the first half hour of that class. I was like, but at the end there, I would have played some Malcolm X. And he was like, no, I couldn't do it, I won't do it. And I said, why not? And he said, Malcolm X is too negative, uh, these people need positive uplifting voices. They, they need, basically they need to hear people who are going to try and socialize them, not people are going to try and criticize society. And I just found that so disheartening. That, you know, faced with a young man demanding to hear an intellectual, challenging, rigorous voice, one of the, the, the great towering intellectuals of 20th century thought in America, and it was just not going to happen. Now being more generous, I also understand that things like this happen all the time in the classrooms because these teachers are afraid of the students' home environments. They're afraid of the society that these kids come from. They're afraid of opening up a Pandora's box of, you know, discussing oppression and they don't want to relieve young people of responsibility for the actions that they took that landed them there. They want to see the kids socialized. But I, I, the real problem is they just don't know how to talk about these other things. And they weren't trained, that's not, you know, most teachers, if they have any training at all in cultural relevance, it's, it's not, it's fairly superficial and it's not like, let me be, teach you how to be culturally relevant to incarcerated youth. That's way more demanding. So they need help, they need other people in the room. They need credible messengers, people who can talk about gangs and guns and the effects of violence and toxic masculinity and all of these things in ways that the students can engage with. And we, we should not expect teachers to be able to do that, right? We need to bring in experts in that. The other thing is authentic engagement is going to require talking about to some degree, and in my experience, the more the better, uh, people's traumas and histories. So, you know, I saw some people writing essay contests and even built into the RTSA curriculum are questions about, what happened in your past and how are you going to change for the future? So that's group therapy, uh, and that is outside the scope of features. That is the work of mental health professionals. But every one of these facilities has a staff of, uh, mental health professionals. And they can also be there to help facilitate safely discussions around childhood trauma, adverse childhood experiences, what led people there, what led people to the future. Right, but the mental health professionals are not making sure the kids can read essays and books about these issues. And the, the educators are not making sure that these mental health issues are being brought. And it's through integrating those that we actually can get student engagement. So it's possible, but it's going to require, like I said, a laser-like focus on engagement and it's going to require looking in these classrooms in a broader perspective than just teachers teaching math, teachers teaching, uh, English. So, um, I, I hope that summarizes really the, the, the most important of the findings, the recommendations in one story. And with that, I'm going to head it back to you Frankie.
Thank you Sean, that was amazing. Commissioner, yep?
Yeah, I'd like to just jump in and just offer some more context as well from, not from these specific, um, you know, from this methodology, but from when I was teaching in Berry J. Nightor, some of the UCLA college courses there. And I think everything that Sean and Frankie and Sam spoke about is really just so true, right? And one of the things I think we need to be mindful of is that not all young people need the same level of engagement. It is not a monolith that we're working with here. Young people come from various spaces, um, educational backgrounds and whatnot. We need to treat them as the individuals that they are. And what I mean by that is that sometimes when I would talk to my young people, um, because I've done both mentorship and, uh, teaching class, right? And they said, miss, school is not for everyone, right? School is not for me, I've never imagined going to college. I never necessarily thought I would finish high school. I don't see that as my path. And we would talk about that and that might be okay, right? And what I mean by that is because what we see about in the future of college, right? We have to be realistic about what that sets young people up for even. And, and so I think that while some young people are definitely college-bound, they, they really want to continue their learning opportunities. Others might need other forms of training and skill building that they're interested in getting involved in and we should offer that to them. If they're at home, similarly, they may not engage their, their schools. Some of their schools were also not productive spaces to learn, right? And so we should think about that and really ask the young people, where do you see yourself? Oh, you don't know? Here's the world of possibilities and that, that we know of, that we can bring to the table. And that's also education. Just because it's not in the academy doesn't mean that it's not education or it's not useful for their futures. So I want us to keep that in mind as we think about education holistically. Also, I wanted to just add in about the quality of instruction from the teachers and some of the anecdotes that Sean, or that Commissioner Les Garcia provided, um, because I think they're very, they hone in on some very important things, right? One is that some things are outside of the scope of teachers, true. And some things you may not have a background in, there are guest speakers for that. You can plan and have guest speakers come into your classroom as long as they have the proper permissions. Similarly, as we were talking about trauma, traumas that the young people have been engaged with, there is trauma-informed training for that. So I think some of the teachers could really benefit if they haven't already going through those types of training, if they're going to be working in a juvenile facility. And there's many more trainings even, implicit bias. I mean, that story that you, I heard come up about Malcolm X, I'm just like, wow, you know, it just struck me as like the implicit bias about the black intellectual that the young person wanted to hear. And there's implicit bias training for that, probation staff have to go through implicit bias training. Teachers probably should too if they don't, haven't already. So, you know, these are kind of, you know, ancillary points to some of the things that came out of our report, but they just ring true throughout and I wanted to make sure that. report, but they just ring true throughout. And I wanted to make sure that everyone on this call listening understands that we need to be really open-minded when it comes to thinking about what education means for young people. That of course, the quality of instruction and the culture of learning needs to be improved in the current learning environments that they're in, and we should all be about that project. But that there's also other things that young people might see as an education route for themselves. I can even think to one of my young people, he thought he wanted to be an air traffic controller. Yes, you have to graduate high school for that, but that's a whole nother, uh, educational track, right, for, for that person. And so, um, yeah, I hope, I hope that this helps provide a bit more context for folks, folks on the call. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dolores, I'm sorry, I was gonna call you Dolores, which I can. Hi, Dolores.
Yes, thank you so much for sharing. Uh, this whole presentation was very informative and, uh, Danielle, I really appreciate your sharing because when I was on site also, you know, just raising the fact that youth are not monolithic, that we're literally setting the pace for the trajectory of their lives of how we see people succeed. But some, you know, would want to go on to be a mechanic and for us, uh, just offering other things. And I even heard this from staff when I was there and from youth visiting. I'm not on the education committee, but I have paid, uh, you know, numerous visits to the youth facilities, talking to the youth, talking to the staff. And some of the staff even feel while, uh, Lego in the educational program, they, you know, they do their best and, and, uh, of course, the youth, you know, they, they need their education. But oftentimes what they're seeing is just warehousing of the youth sitting through these classrooms. You know, that the youth then go out and when we can be preparing them for skills that they are asking, you know, actually longing for, you know, how do I fix a car? How do we, you know, I'm, I want to work with my uncle, you know, who's a cement contractor and I already have been working with him and, you know, just things like that, life skills. And, and, um, and building them up and making them feel good about it as well, you know? So I think that that's really important. And, uh, I will say, Sean, I was really surprised. I thought you were gonna end with the happily ever after and that, you know, he played Malcolm X. So that kind of did throw me off because I was listening and listening and thinking, you know, okay, so they, they played it, but there's so much to learn from Malcolm X, you know, besides what this teacher saw Malcolm as, right? But just the, the leadership, the survival, the strength of using his own incarceration to build. And another program that I think would be excellent for the youth, for those that do want to go on to get their degrees, is like the Underground Scholars Program. They are all formerly incarcerated and they're in universities throughout the state of California. You know, why not get them, you know, in, uh, to be able to talk to the youth that are interested in, or even if they're not interested right now in education, if they're thinking they don't need it. Well, half the, the young adults that are now, you know, in the Underground Scholars Program felt the same way at one time. So, you know, I just really, I, I'm excited because I've seen, you know, some of the classrooms, I've spoken to the youth. I know a lot of them were real interested in music too, the music classes, they seem to get a lot of, out of, and, um, and I know that, you know, that, that we can do better because they deserve better. And so I'm really excited about this whole, uh, all the recommendations and, and this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. And Wendy, before I, before I hand it back to you, Wendy, so we can continue. You know, hearing Sean and, and Danielle and now Dolores talk about, you know, personal experiences that go beyond the scope of the report, but it's still under the guise of it. You know, I was, I was just remembering, you know, when I was in Central Juvenile Hall from ninety-one and part of ninety-two, so about a year and a half of lived experience there. Um, fast forward almost thirty years later, now as a commissioner. On the drives to these camps and juvenile halls, I will tell you that I was really excited to see what has happened from a twentieth century now to twenty-first century uh, difference, I suppose, uh, is what I was looking forward to. Um, sadly, I, um, as, as this, as we initially Sean pointed out, that we're the eyes and ears um, for, for the public and for those who are logging in and concerned about this topic. Sadly, when I went to, um, mainly these, these, um, these, these camps, it was almost like a flashback in time. I walked into a, a room that had, um, that appeared to be a lot of old books. Uh, a lot of folks in around, you know, practicing their graffiti. Um, it, it seemed like the energy seemed very low. Not every classroom, but what obviously reminded me of my own experience that I thought, wow, not much has changed in all this time. And I know it's, it's an unfair judgment or statement to make, and I'm sure there's been a lot of improvements in the last thirty years. But what I was, what I was struck with was the fact that, um, after all this time has gone by, I was expecting to see maybe one of the healthiest high schools, um, that was being mimicked now on the inside, but it seemed to be kind of like the same thing, just like we're on a routine. You're, you've had breakfast, you made your bed, now this kind of passes over and puts you in a classroom for a while and and then once that's done, we take you, feed you for lunch, and then we're kind of back in the classroom again, and then that's done. And, and I just felt like I know part of the report focused on, this is the majority of their waking time is in the classroom, especially Monday through Friday. There is so much that adults, all of us, but specifically those who are being paid on, you know, on a, on our salary who are there not volunteering, but who are being paid to impact these, these young children's lives. Um, I think Sean said, you know, I think everyone has said, like, the mark is being missed, you're missing the marker, you know, so. Anyway, I wanted just to chime in and say that, um, just add my, my, more of my two cents, but Wendy, back to you.
Okay, thank you all very much. We're going to move on to public comment. Um, we're gonna begin that actually by, I'm giving space for Superintendent Duarte to speak, and we're very thankful that she's here today. Uh, but I'm gonna give the instructions for public comment before we, um, turn the floor over to her so that you all can uh, be prepared to raise your hand. And again, the queue as Dr. Duarte is speaking. Uh, so if you're already here on WebEx and would like to speak, please click on the little hand icon. So you click on participants at the bottom right and then on the little hand icon. And once it's, it's shaded in, that means your hand is raised and we can call you. Um, if you're calling in, you can also speak to raise your hand. If you're calling in, you dial star three on your phone. Uh, and we'll call you and then you dial star three again to put your hand down after you've given comment. Um, all commenters today will have two minutes unless, uh, we end up, um, needing more time, but I think we're, we'll be good with, uh, two minutes each person. You're also welcome to make a public comment in writing. Uh, you can, uh, send us an email at info@poc.lacounty.gov. Uh, we received some very insightful, um, public comment in writing in anticipation of the meeting that was shared with commissioners, um, including a letter from a group of educational justice advocates that will be attached to the agenda. And if you get your public comment to us before five P M. today, it will be attached as a part of the public record. Le damos la bienvenida a esta reunión a miembros de la comunidad quienes prefieren hacer sus comentarios en español. Les daremos cinco, perdón, cuatro minutos, dos minutos para su comentario, dos minutos para la traducción. Podemos nosotros probar la traducción al inglés o usted puede probar su propio traductor. No más avísenos que prefiere su comentario en español. Uh, we have a few discussion guidelines. We'd like for you to introduce yourself and make sure to share your thoughts and be respectful of time. Uh, honor equity and participation and practice grace and openness with each other. Uh, and also, um, we invite you to share your personal experiences, professional experiences, um, as we really appreciate all of you who are in attendance. So with that, I'm, uh, Dr. Duarte, you can, um, unmute yourself and Jennifer's gonna stop. She did it before I asked. Stop sharing the slides. Uh, so welcome, Dr. Duarte, uh, and we look forward to your comments.
Thank you so much and, and thank you for your interest and your passion for the children we serve. I think we should start off with something that we all agree on, and that's that children don't belong in jail. And let's be clear about the kids we're talking about. A hundred percent of the children we serve are poor, black and brown children. All have experienced trauma in and out of systems, experienced abuse, neglect and abandonment. The trauma they've experienced is compounded by systemic racism, which impacts every aspect of the well-being and ability to thrive, including access to adequate housing, healthcare, mental health, and yes, education. Many of the children we serve come to us reading at a third or fourth grade reading levels. And thank you for acknowledging that education is the solution, the pathway out of poverty and the road to opportunity and positive change for all children. And that's why we've invested millions of dollars in social workers, well-being counselors, arts programs, programs you refer to are programs we brought in. Specialized programs that include trades such as culinary arts, healthcare, and giving our students the opportunity to experience college while they're with us through dual enrollment. And I also need to clarify that all of our teachers are trained in trauma and forecare and implicit bias and culturally responsive training. It's not easy. Our students are with us for a very brief, a very brief period of time. Anywhere from two days to six months. The average at the halls is fifteen days and the average at the camps is four months. And we realize the urgency in serving them while we have them. So we work closely with our Board of Education, our governing board that has oversight of Lego's educational programs. They get regular reports, analysis of data, they conduct site visits. I'm really excited to say that every single one of our members of the board who are appointed by our Board of Supervisors are all educators. The Juvenile Court Schools are WASC accredited. This is what all public high schools go through, a comprehensive, rigorous process that includes days of site visits, interviews and a review of data. And the Road to Success Academy, the framework that we use, which includes themes such as empowerment, hope, resilience and transformation, received the Golden Bell Award, a state award for its unique design in meeting the needs of justice-involved youth. In fact, we've been asked to train other county offices of education across the state on this well-respected framework. And it's a framework. And it was designed by students and teachers. In fact, it was actually the students that named it. Teachers use it to create lesson plans. They design the curriculum. It's designed to give students and teachers a voice in their learning. And in terms of others coming in to visit our sites, they're there because we invited them. UCLA, USC and other universities doing research are there because we welcome an evaluation that's done correctly, evidence-based, so that we can learn from our partnerships. So let me tell you a little bit of the concerns that we have with the report that I've provided in writing. First, the timing of the report and site visits could not have happened at a worse time, right during the middle of a pandemic and one week after reopening our schools for in-person instruction. Every school in the nation is facing disruptions due to this pandemic. And juvenile court's schools are not exempt to those unprecedented disruptions. We're working hard to minimize them, such as shortages in staffing and increased in need for mental health due to the loss of life and the severity of experiences people have had during this pandemic. And this doesn't include other disruptions that take place that are out of our control. Let me give you an example. We just got noticed on Friday night that Central would be temporarily closing. And basically overnight, we had to move an entire school. The students, the staff, the counselors, the paraprofessionals, all the technology had to be moved overnight to Nidor. So if you were to visit Nidor today, or I should say, uh, in a couple of days, the impact on the quality of the educational program you see would be different as they're all adjusting and moving. In terms of your research methodology, it's written as a research paper stating methods and findings, even though there was no formal research completed. You know, one-time visits for ten to fifty minutes at a site and developing an evaluative report based on these short visits is extremely limiting. I wonder if the laypeople that visited may not have understood what they were actually seeing. When students were working on computers, it's more packets. Those are actually specialized software that's being used to measure a student's reading level and ensure that we have the appropriate type of rigor that that student is engaged in. And I want to close by saying that Lego is committed to making sure that every single, single one of our students gets the quality instruction that they deserve. And we agree with many of the recommendations outlined in the report because we're doing all of those things. Uh, we are committed to ensuring safety and social emotional routines, helping children deal with trauma. And I hate to tell you, but it is teachers' roles in addressing trauma. In all eighty districts, we're training teachers to understand trauma and to know when they need to refer children to external additional help. We're working with principals, teachers, staff and students to improve our practices and engage students. And when you see disengaged students, it can be because of the instruction. It can also be because they're incarcerated. Some of them are coming off of substance use. Some of them have just found out how long they're going to be in jail. Some of them have found out that their girlfriend just left them because they were incarcerated and they're not excited about learning. So we spend a lot of time making sure we're supporting them. We're partnering with CBOs and other agencies, including probation and mental health, to make sure that we're all collaborating because the needs our children have are critical to making sure that we are meeting them. And one thing that your report didn't address was parents. Parents are a key part of all of this. And that's why we have parent workshops. We have parents leading other parents. We have parents understanding how they can play a significant role in being a part of their child's instruction. And so we're reaching out to parents, engaging them in their children's education. So again, I want to close with the issues that our children face are very complex with many different agencies working together or needing to work together to make sure that our children are our priority and that we do everything possible to send them off better than how we receive them and able and ready to participate in their home communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Carrillo. I'm gonna move on to public comments, if that's all right with you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Wendy.
Okay, um, and thank you, uh, Jennifer. I'll give you a second to put the timer up. Um, we're gonna start with Tapau Osborne. Uh, Tapau, you're unmuted and you can speak.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much. My name is Tapau Osborne and according to, to for the Division of People's Services with Los Angeles County Office of Education. Been working with our counseling staff, our, uh, PBIS program, which are probation, I'm sorry, uh, Positive Behavior Intervention Systems and Support. Um, I just wanted to just, uh, highlight the fact that you focused a lot on the classroom. The classrooms are very important. But also in addition to, uh, our Lego schools are so much better. And we have such a very comprehensive program and that does include our support, our counselors from our transition counselors to ensure that our students, who talk to our students, to ensure that they are aligned, that they, um, know what they want to transition into once they leave. Um, we have those conversations, not just from a school, where do you want to go when you leave, but also what are some, what are your academic goals? We have individual learning plans for each individual student that comes into the facilities. Um, every student that sits down with their counselor and they go through their individual learning plan and create academic goals, behavior goals, as well as post-secondary goals that are specific to them. Um, we also have our behavior, uh, manager counselors who work with students, um, to create positive behavior. Um, not just when they've done something wrong, but they check in. We have members of our staff who were former, uh, Lego students. So when we talk about credible messengers, that's also very important. We have, though, we do have members of our staff who were former Lego students who are talking to our students, who are able to make those connections and have those conversations. Um, so I, you spoke a lot about the classroom. I just want to give a little context about some of the things that go on outside of that classroom, but at the school that really do aid the students in their classroom, in the classroom, and as well as help them make that next step. We don't call it a hot hand, I mean, a warm handoff. We do a hot handoff to these school districts and make sure our students are connected. If there's anything that they need, we follow up three days, thirty days, sixty days and ninety days to make sure that those connections have been made. to make sure that those connections have been made. So I just wanted to give a little additional context.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Greg Johnson. Greg, you can begin.
Thank you very much. My name is Greg Johnson. I'm Program Manager at the Arts Education Collective, which is in the Education Division of the Los Angeles County Department of Arts and Culture. It's a privilege to be here with y'all, and I very much appreciate the opportunity just to quickly let everyone know that this report outlines the importance of the arts and that the Department of Arts and Culture has been very active in the seven years that I've been on the staff in supplying the kinds of services to all the probation camps and juvenile halls, as well as the Juvenile Day Reporting Centers, with the kinds of engagement, with credible messengers, with the ability to do arts integration so that academic objectives can be reached through the arts and engaging the youth. And we do receive baseline funding from the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, that's JJCPA funding, and that we have on our staff numerous individuals who have extensive experience on arts integration, curriculum design, student engagement, and the means not only for providing these kinds of services and this kind of enhancement for student learning within these facilities and within the probation secure facilities, but throughout all of Los Angeles County. And I would invite you to be in touch with us. And I just wanted to address that concern that there may not be the expertise in Los Angeles County or in other county agencies to address what is being recommended in your very fine report. However, we do have that kind of expertise, and I will follow up with my director to provide a written set of invitations and recommendations so that we can make that come to pass. Thank you again for your time. Certainly appreciate all the work that you do.
Thank you. Next up, we have Elida Ledesma. Elida? I actually can't see your name. So Janae, can you tell me when she's unmuted?
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Elida Ledesma. I'm the Executive Director of the Arts for Healing and Justice Network. I want to thank the commissioners for conducting this report and for hosting this special meeting. At the same time, I am deeply disappointed and concerned that Lego continues to not recognize or acknowledge what CBOs, but most importantly, young people have been seeing for years. We are a network that supports multiple art organizations that are doing work inside detention facilities for many, many years. And we can attest that the challenges that the report highlights and that were shared today are not solely due to the pandemic. These have been happening for many years. These are challenges that the youth and advocates have been raising to Lego's dismissal for years. I am not confident that any change and/or reform can truly be achieved while Lego's leadership doesn't even acknowledge there is a problem. This speaks to the importance for the POC to continue to prioritize education and also demand further transparency regarding Lego's accountability. Youth deserve better, and I hope that we can continue to provide them with the best opportunities for success. Thank you.
Thank you, Elida. Next, we go to Danita Bochamp. Danita, you can begin.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I think this was an excellent presentation. However, I would have to agree with Commissioner Canales. I would like to know why more life skill types of courses and education is not being provided to these youth. As we all know, not everybody is set for a two-year or four-year college. And I also would like to know why there isn't already in place educators who come from the same backgrounds as Ms. Duarte. I mean, we all know she was a high school dropout at one time and now has her PhD. You know, these are the types of people that they can connect with, that they can understand because they've been in their shoes. They understand the struggles and adversities that they have to deal with. And, you know, people of that have gone down that road understand the struggles emotionally, mentally, physically that they have to overcome to be successful in this program. So I would hope that in the future that the education program would include these types of individuals that can truly help the youth and reimagine it as what it is scheduled to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to Gregory Alange. I hope I said that correctly. Gregory, you can begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Greg Alange, and I'm with Loyola Law School Youth Justice and Education Clinic. First, I would like to commend and thank the Oversight Commission for issuing this report and demonstrating a commitment to helping incarcerated youth receive quality education. However, I would like to address two related and relevant topics, namely time loss of instruction and suspension, neither of which are discussed in the report, yet both of which threaten to undermine the recommendations offered therein. One contributing factor to time loss of education is a lack of immediate enrollment. As the Education Justice Coalition points out in their response to your report, quote, "Despite the legal right to immediate enrollment, youth who are incarcerated often experience gaps before they are enrolled in Lego juvenile court schools. This gap places incarcerated youth at an educational disadvantage from the outset." Regarding suspensions, the education report highlights a concerning instance in which a teacher, quote, pulled out a paper that he said was to be used to suspend one of the boys who had been arguing with another. This example illustrates two salient points. One, that students want to be in a classroom. And two, that students are so threatened by the prospect of being removed from the classroom that at least some teachers leverage that fear to coerce compliance. But rather than leveraging these students' fears, we must instead leverage their desire to be present in class. To that end, I suggest that the Oversight Commission issue reports specific to lost instructional time and closely examine the matter to highlight steps to remove barriers to keeping students out of class. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Irene Orina Rivera.
Hi, can, hi, can you all hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Irene Rivera, and I am submitting this comment on behalf of the HCU of Southern California. We've been working with the Coalition to attempt to improve education for our most marginalized youth, specifically those who are incarcerated in the juvenile facilities. We've all seen the reports, lawsuits, settlements, and evaluations of the system over the past decade, all of which have concluded that neither probation nor Lego are providing students with inadequate instruction or services. Instead, they all confirm that the system has all but given up on these youths. We're grateful to the Probation Oversight Commission for performing its independent assessment, but, you know, we're very unsurprised by its findings. This report confirms what we, our clients, our partners, and youth themselves have been saying for years. And enough is enough. You know, we urge the Board of Supervisors to exercise its oversight authorities and finally make the transformative changes that our youth deserve. This report must be only the first step. You know, the commission now needs to engage youth, community partners, and other stakeholders to develop and implement a concrete plan to improve conditions. And any such plan should work towards full abolition, a system where no young person is ever incarcerated. We need to truly prioritize our youth. And now that we all have acknowledged the problem, we look forward to working with you to finally break this terrible cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are going to come back to public comment in just a moment. But for a minute, I'm going to hand this back over to Chair Carrillo because we have at least one commissioner has to leave right at 1:30, and we want to give an opportunity for the commission to accept the report before we lose forum.
Thank you, Wendy. So with that being said, you sort of got my punchline there. We need to vote while we're all here just to accept the report. I know that Commissioner Dupuy has to leave exactly at 1:29, 1:30. So Wendy, would you please call the roll? And the vote is to accept the report as is into the record.
So we'll take that as a motion by Chair Carrillo. I do need a second on the motion too before I can call the roll.
Second.
I think that was Commissioner Lewis? Yes? Great, thank you. If there, is there any discussion about the motion before we go back to public comment in the?
In the vote?
The vote? No? Okay. Also, I will note in the minutes that Commissioner Meredith joined us a number of minutes ago. Thank you for being here, Commissioner Meredith. So please unmute yourself and vote. We are voting just to accept the Programs and Services Ad Hoc Subcommittee's Education Report. Commissioner Dolores Canales?
Aye.
Commissioner Danielle Dupuy?
Accept.
Commissioner Sean Garcia-Lays?
Accept.
Commissioner Sam Lewis?
Accept.
Commissioner Don Meredith?
Accept.
And Commissioner Frankie Carrillo?
Accept.
Great, so the motion passes. Thank you. Anything else, Frankie, or shall we go back to public comment?
Back to public comments, please.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm going to go next to Damon Ayala. Janae, can you let me know when Damon has been unmuted?
Damon is now unmuted.
Great, you can begin.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Good morning. Thank you for hearing me out. My name is Damon. With dignity and power now and L.A. youth uprising. Just wanted to echo what Commissioner Carrillo said in my short time in working in the youth space. I, one thing that has stuck out like a sore thumb is that nothing has changed really, not very much, at least in the forty years since I've been there. You know, both at Nidorf and Central, and even the camps in some cases, except for maybe Kilpatrick. Which is all the more reason we need to embrace new ideas and new things, unlike a lot of what I'm hearing today. And also on top of that, another reason why we need to get the Secure Youth Track people out of Nidorf and not as a permanent facility. Because we can't just keep on doing the same old thing. Also, I just wanted to affirm and validate, at least from my perspective, Commissioner Canales's suggestion to bring in the Unchained Scholars. I am also a social work intern at USC and a member of Unchained Scholars. And I think that's an excellent idea because they're all examples of people who have been in their shoes, sometimes literally in those seats, that can help them to lift themselves up. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go to Stephanie Horwitz. Janae, can you let me know when Stephanie is unmuted?
Stephanie is unmuted.
Okay, you can begin.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Horwitz, and I'm an attorney with the National Center for Youth Law and the Education Justice Coalition. We appreciate that the Probation Oversight Commission has completed this report, but the findings are unsurprising. Young people, families, and teachers have been telling us for years that education programming within the halls and camps is completely inadequate. It's unsurprising that Lego's written response to this report is both dismissive and defensive as they have failed to meaningfully improve their programs through years of reports, lawsuits, and settlements. The commission must treat this report as a first step in demanding accountability and real change to Lego's educational programming. Youth, families, and other community stakeholders should be engaged to provide feedback and create action steps for improved education in the halls and camps. Although our coalition believes that no young person should be incarcerated, for as long as they are, they deserve high-quality educational programming that supports their academic and personal growth. We urge the commission to continue the momentum generated from this report and push for real change for our most vulnerable youth. This meeting must be the beginning, not the end, of the commission's actions. Continuing to give Lego a platform to defend their inadequate programming without pushing for real accountability and change helps no one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Elena Moonves-Leb. Elena, you can begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Elena Moonves-Leb, a senior staff attorney at the Alliance for Children's Rights and part of the Education Justice Coalition. As part of my work, I directly represent youth who have been educated within court facilities as well as work on policy issues in this area. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. We're extremely encouraged that the Probation Oversight Committee is taking on a leadership role in helping the county see what young people serve by the system and advocates have long been saying. Education is a vital part of addressing reform of the juvenile justice system, and our current system is not serving youth equitably. We're not surprised by the findings of the report, but we are troubled, and we believe anyone who is serving the young people of this county will be as well. We have repeatedly shared the many stories of young people we work with and advocate for, echoing the observations that are included in this report. We've pointed out that the local testing done in the halls and camps had demonstrated a lack of growth and in fact, often a decline in basic skills while youth are incarcerated. We hope this report will be the beginning of a real examination of what education looks like in the court schools and what we as a county want it to look like in the future. Thank you to the POC for doing this important work, and we look forward to opportunities to continue to engage around how to change the outcomes it identifies, which we hope will include moving youth out of education in carceral settings to the greatest extent possible, improving the quality of education in the carceral setting for those youth that must serve, and increasing transparency and input with and from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go to Melinda Kikani. Millie, you can begin.
Hi, this is Millie Kikani with the Children's Defense Fund. I just want to start with how disappointing Ms. Duarte's statement response, I'm not sure what you want to call it, was. You know, where are Ms. Duarte's metrics in sending kids off better than when you receive them? I believe that's what she said. Because the only metrics we've seen repeatedly, from the DOJ to the POC and the young people themselves, are that these kids are being sent off worse than when Lego received them. In fact, I'm pretty sure that exact sentiment was shared at a Measure J meeting around reading levels by Lego staff. Literally, reading levels dropped after admission into Lego's juvenile schools. That doesn't sound like you're sending kids off better than when you receive them. The experts, I think, in the quality of education received would presumably be the students. So perhaps it makes sense to start with a review of the curriculum and the education, in quotes, that's being offered by Lego, by the young people subject to this education. You know, perhaps it's anonymous surveys administered by the POC on a quarterly basis. Perhaps that will be the research and data that will encourage Ms. Duarte to be less defensive and more responsive. Whether visits for five minutes, fifteen minutes, or even ten different days. If those visits resulted in these findings, these findings are horrific. And if I was remotely responsible or connected to what was being reported, my very first response would be, I'm sorry, and we clearly need to do better. So that would be a great start, Ms. Duarte. And if education is the answer, this looks like an F. And my hope, POC, is that this report is presented to the board. My hope is that this is the first of many. My hope is that data and transparency around the quality of education, credits, A through G requirements, ability to access higher ed, suspension rates, reading levels, and the like are core to how we hold Lego accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Carrillo, we have one final commenter that is Miguel Casar. Miguel, Janae, will you let me know when Miguel is... Oh, I think I can hear you again. Miguel Casar, are you there? Okay, that is, that's the end of our public comments.
Hello?
Chair Carrillo?
Hope someone's there, Wendy.
Oh, can we hear you?
Yep. I think so.
Okay, great. Please begin.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, good morning. My name is Miguel Casar. I'm a researcher at UCLA and a professor of costedomicology skills at School of Education. And I think that this report, for many of us that have been spent years working with system-impacted youth, comes not as a surprise, but as a welcome beginning to what is hopefully a new time of transparency, accountability, and hopefully change. I think for too many years, we've been allowed to trample upon the rights of young people in L.A. County, which includes the right to education. The fact that Lego also seems to be justifying and offending what they do instead of welcoming this as an opportunity to radically reimagine what they can do is both disappointing, but unfortunately unsurprising. There's a plethora of reports, research, well-documented testimony that speaks to, at best, the failure of these systems to provide education. And in reality, the violence, the dismissal, the disregard that occurs at the hands of these so-called youth-serving institutions. I think, again, once again, the system will defend its work. But if it really cares about the education of these people as they claim, then it is time to stand courageously and own up to the responsibility and the decades of meeting, failing to meet these responsibilities. I think it is also important to recognize that this work of doing authentic education within carceral institutions should be called out as problematic and complicated, and that should be part of Lego's part in this, owning up to those complexities. part in this owning up to those complexities and working with us to work through them. I really appreciate the Commission beginning this conversation. And if it is true that you all welcome this new transparency and especially LACO welcomes this transparency, then I look forward to working with community to ensure that the educational rights and the healing of youth are centered as we move forward.
Thank you. That's the end of public comment, Chair Carrillo. I did want to just address one thing that Dr. Duarte mentioned about the closure of Central Juvenile Hall temporarily. And just to let the folks who are here in attendance at the meeting know that the Probation Oversight Commission will be definitely paying close attention to how that impacts not just education, but also just overall the impact of that change. And it's not something we've talked about in our meeting since it happened just recently. But since it was brought up, I just wanted to make that statement that we're aware and will be paying close attention and have been kept in the loop by probation leadership. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Wendy. You know, I don't normally thank speakers as much, as much as I should. But for this special meeting, I really want to thank the speakers who called in and gave their public comments. It was really important to to have those who are listening on this meeting give feedback that was really, really captivating and moving. So thank you guys for doing that. Sean, as the Chair of this Subcommittee here, I really want to pass it over to you for closing remarks and obviously open up to other Commissioners. Do you want me to do that? You want to speak first or want to go last?
I'll go last. I think that'd be better.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, for the rest of you, if you'd like to chime in and give any comments, now's the time. And I think it's Canales and Meredith at this point.
Hi, my hands raised?
No, you can just, it's just us. Go for it.
I just wanted to just thank everybody for their presentation today and, you know, and especially the caller. So I'm glad that you raised that. And I feel that, you know, there cannot be any change at all until we admit that there is a problem. And so that is something that, that needs to be addressed. And, you know, I just, thank you so much. Oh, I know why I raised my hand. I apologize. I, during the meeting, after Commissioner Dupy shared, I began referring to her as Danielle. And so I would like to apologize and correct that for the record and acknowledge her as Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Canales. Commissioner Meredith, you want to chime in? And you're muted in case you're speaking. Okay. Just before I pass it over to you, Sean, or Commissioner Garcia-Lays. Everyone, thank you, staff, Wendy, everyone who participated in this great report.
Oh, I think you froze.
Yep, I think you should take it, take it over.
Okay, well. Yeah, so I just wanted, and really by saying what I had hoped we would achieve with this is to build consensus of the different stakeholders, including LACO, the educational justice advocates, around the idea that we need the student's involvement and students wanting to learn and believing it could happen in the classroom is the foundation from which all of these other things can be fixed. I don't know if we have that consensus. What we heard from Dr. Eduardo was that from where she sits, everything looks great. And I think we have a lot, a real, I mean, a list of excellent recommendations coming from a lot of the educational advocates, but not prioritized in a way that I think we can really coalesce around. So I hope that this report and these recommendations and this meeting can, can get us towards that, even if we're not all the way there yet. But it's clear that we need to pick a large goal. It needs to be simply articulated and it needs universal buy-in and then we can all work towards it. So in the meantime, I think the suggestion that we continue to talk to the young people and that we try and create some metrics of our own by which to evaluate what is happening at the most grassroots level possible is a good suggestion. And I think the Programming Services Committee is going to continue working towards that. And one last thing, so I would not give the classrooms an F. I think there is enough good things that this is not total failure. And I, I had thought that the report was critical, yes, but recognizes that there are some good things happening. I will say that as a teacher, I prided myself on always being the easiest D that any of my students had and the hardest A that any of them had. And that is my approach with institutions as well. So there are things that are worthy within the classrooms that we'd like to see built upon. And I hope that the County Office of Education administrators at the sites are able to do that, even if others within LACO just really want to focus on what they have done rather than what the students are experiencing. And that's it. With that, I'll pass it back to you, Frankie, to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Chair Garcia-Lays. And with that, thank you, everyone, and have a great day. This concludes our meeting for today.
Thanks.
Bye, everyone.